Start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great blood that for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin our board meeting by resourcing our board meeting because we have a public hearing on our proposed budgets for 2022, tax rates, tax levies, our CPS plan, and bus replacement plan. These are all part of the normal and routine, but very important yearly items that we... What we want over this last meeting, correct? In August I was able to move it in. Yes, and then, so this is the time for the public if they have any questions, concerns, other comments. Is there anything, Mrs. Vance, that you would want Mr. Vanderweil to present, or these have been...
No, these have been presented before.
At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding the proposed budgets for 2022, tax rates, tax levies, CPS plan, or bus replacement plans? Okay, if not, then we will recess the public hearing, or adjourn, excuse me, the public hearing. And we will, let's see, that was the public hearing for those items. Now we will open the public hearing for additional appropriations for a general obligation bond. Notice that this hearing was published in the Rochester Sentinel on August 24th. Do I have a motion to adopt the proof of publication? Motion by Kyle, second?
Second.
Second by Kyle Rensburger. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. The board will now hear all taxpayers desiring to be heard in respect to the matter of the additional appropriation and the amount of $995,000 plus investment earnings thereon. Taking a look at the additional appropriation resolution, we are being asked to adopt this resolution. Hand these out first. Then here are other copies if there are others that would like to see those. This is the affidavit of location, by the way. Taking a look at the additional appropriation resolution, we are being asked to adopt this resolution which appropriates the proceeds of the general obligation bond of 2021 in the amount of $995,000 to the cost of the project, which has not yet been defined. Do I have any taxpayers that wanted to talk about this resolution? Do I have a motion to adopt the additional appropriation resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Kyle McLaughlin. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. I will now ask for a motion that directs the Secretary, Katie Miller, to advertise the sale of the bonds.
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Casey. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I don't know.
Motion carries seven zero. But for some of that respect, right?
I must have missed the lead here.
It is important to note that the Firm of Ice Miller Bond Council of Indianapolis has been consulted relative to the procedure to be followed in connection with the proposed bond issue and the rendering of an opinion approving the legality of the bonds. The board was then presented with a form of resolution for adoption for the purpose of authorizing the issuance of the bonds. Now looking at the final bond resolution, we are being asked to adopt this resolution which allows the issuance and sale of the general obligation bond of 2021 in the principal amount of $995,000 per the details as described herein. As a reminder, this does not contain a description of how the bond money will be spent. That discussion will come at a later time. Do I have a motion to adopt the final bond resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Casey, second?
Second.
Second by Kyle Rensburger. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Finally, the board needs to consider and approve the post-issuance compliance procedures. This resolution amends and restates the original procedures to provide for a new compliance officer and to incorporate recent changes in law. We would be appointing our business manager, Todd Vanderweil, Todd Vanderweil, to serve as the compliance officer and direct that he implement these amended procedures. Do I have a motion to adopt the post-issuance compliance procedures?
So moved.
Motion by Katie, second by Joe. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. That concludes the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kyle Rensburger, second. Second by Casey. All those in favor? The meeting is adjourned by a vote of sevens. The public hearing is adjourned about the GO bonds. Now we're going to resume our regular board meeting, which I am more familiar with. We are going to I A under Financial Report, which is approval of claims 19,753 to 19,889, totaling $813,803.81. Were there any questions or concerns from the board on those? Also payrolls. We have two payrolls. August 27th, 2021, $427,935.16. And the September 10th, 2021 payroll for $462,856.66. Any questions or concerns from the board on those? Okay, Todd, would you go over the funds report for us, please?
I will. Education Fund in August, we had receipts of $1,047,065.32. Expenses in August of $813,817.4. End of August balance of $1,223,378.82. Debt Service Fund, we had receipts of $5,991.26. There were no expenses in August. Month-end balance to the Debt Service Fund of $1,557,681.85. The Operations Fund, we had receipts of $14,298.4. Expenses in August of $305,307.20. Our balance at the end of August in the Operations Fund is $1,338,493.70.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims, payrolls, and the funds report.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next, consent items, we have minutes of the August 16th, 2021, regular meeting, public hearing, minutes of the August 23rd, 2021, regular board meeting, and minutes of the September 7th, 2021, study session, board and board meeting. There are two separate ones there. Any questions or concerns, comments by the board? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve all of those minutes of the consent items.
So moved.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Then we have a third reading of policies, which would mean that these policies would be, if we read and then vote to adopt them, would be adopted tonight. Those, all those numbers are listed there. They've been gone over multiple board meetings. Were there any concerns or comments from the board? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve these policies.
So moved.
Motion by Casey.
Second.
Second by Kyle Rensburger. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we have a proposed increase to lifeguard pay at the rate of $10 per hour. Anything else you want to say about that? Yes. That was part of a discussion and other pay raises that we did recently, and that brings us in line with other organizations and their pay rates for that. Any questions or comments from the board? Now I'll entertain a motion to increase lifeguard pay to the rate of $10 per hour.
So moved.
Motion by Kyle Rensburger.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Every year, we have a tag or teacher appreciation grant policy that needs to be re-approved, and so that happens tonight.
So working with Teachers Association during discussions, we did talk about the tag grant, and I believe with Mr. Shelley here, both sides agreed that we would continue to distribute the tag grant funds as we have in the past, which means that we need to provide a 25% differential between highly effective and effective teachers. Teachers need to meet all of the compliance parts of the tag grant, which means if they retired or resigned their position from last year, they would not qualify. If they're a first-year teacher with Rochester schools, they would not qualify. They have to be present at the time or employed at the time that the funds come in, and then we distribute those out. Typically, Todd, and hoping you may need to help me a little bit, they typically come in right around mid-November, just in time for us to issue those to teachers right around Black Friday, which is great for everybody and local businesses, I think. But also in that, we have just a certain amount of time that we have to release the funds to teachers, so that would be part of this. And then we always issue those in a separate check. It's actually a hard check form. It is not direct deposited into teachers' accounts for various reasons. We learned in the past that for some teachers, if we do direct deposit, it triggers within their accounts a house payment or a car payment or something coming out. So we issue those in paper check forms, and those go to the teachers as quickly as we can. And again, all of this will happen right around November, right around Thanksgiving.
Any questions or comments from the board?
There's an option at the end of this. And I see, I just pulled the paperwork that you gave us last, at the last meeting, and it's on here, too. Is that something that you're doing, or?
We, we don't choose that option. We don't differentiate any more than the 25% up above. Some schools will withhold some of the tag grant funds and put that back into the educational fund and don't distribute the entire amount to teachers. Others provide a greater differential than the 25% between highly effective and effective, and we've elected just to continue to keep the 25% differential.
Okay.
And it's not part of the base salary, which is another option we could choose, but we need to...
Exactly, yeah. Thank you. And all of this, for those who are new to the board, all of this is driven by teacher evaluations. And then also, the state has a funding formula, and they let us know how much we get specifically for tag grants, and we make sure that we are transparent with the Teachers Association, and they see that figure, that number as well. And then we work with them in regards to specifically what date we'll be able to issue those paper checks to. Hope, I don't know, I'm sorry. I don't know if you have anything to add in regards to that, or?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tag grant.
So moved.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, consideration of co-ed volleyball club.
So, and I've attached policies that coincide with this, but we have a request from the high school to begin a co-ed volleyball club, a group. And typically, what, how this works is, they're asking for one night per week, and we would work with the different buildings. I know that sometimes during the winter months, it's very hard to schedule events at the high school or middle school. Sometimes we do have the Riddle Gym or Columbia Gym that may be available for this, but normal IHSA activities and athletics will supersede this. This will not displace any of those teams, but as available, we would like to open the gym for them to scrimmage. There are some schools, a year or two down the road, if we sustain, see sustainability, they're beginning to compete with each other, so it may be a movement in that direction. But at this point in time, it's an activity to help build skills, to give students something, physical, physical exercise to do, and to promote that within Rochester schools.
How does this work, like if they're Columbia or Riddle, as far as, like, you know, access to the gym, lights being turned on, turned off, closing the building back up when they're done?
Sure. So when, when these things happen, when they schedule, the building level principals and our maintenance team gets schedules of events, and so the custodians are responsible for opening up. That gives the students and the sponsor access to the gym. And then afterwards, the evening custodians lock everything up, clean everything up, and will leave. But this is all done through assignments. And Kevin's nodding has had a lot of it runs through his office for gym availability first. If he says it's available athletically, it goes to the principal to make sure that there aren't any other events scheduled for that evening, choir concert, a band concert, those types of things. And then once it's approved there, it goes into our maintenance system, and the head custodians track that, and we'll assign that.
I thought that's what it was.
So basically, like intermarbles?
Sure, absolutely.
Do we have intermarble basketball anymore? That used to be big for four.
Not at this time. We haven't had.
Yeah.
So trying to revive some of those things.
And that would be subject to the availability of the gyms, et cetera, at the elementary, so it's not going to bump any elementary programs.
Correct, exactly.
Will the students be required to have a physical?
Yes.
Any other questions about the volleyball club? If not, I'll entertain a motion to ins, let's see, to approve a co-ed volleyball club at the high school.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Then we have a proposed request for an exception to the Wednesday rule for National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony.
So we do have a policy where grades K through, or pre-K through eighth grade, we reserve Wednesday night as family night. There are times when we can't fit in every event and activity when we look at fine arts and the use of gymnasium. So Misty Kreig is the NJHS sponsor, reached out to me, and they're having a difficult time scheduling this around athletics and some fine arts programs. Many of the students that would be involved in NJHS are also part of those other activities, and then we're also concerned about availability of a point of access for students to have the induction ceremony. So she is requesting that Wednesday, September 29th, at 6 o'clock, the ceremony should last approximately an hour, asking that the board lift that policy for that evening for the induction ceremony.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request to have an exception to the Wednesday rule for the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony.
So moved.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Allowance to use March 9th, 2022 as a date for a band concert.
So exactly the same conversation as before, just having trouble scheduling and making sure we have the venue for that, and then making sure we don't cross over with athletic events, so every student has the opportunity to participate. Looking at that, the band, they're proposing a March 9th evening concert on a Wednesday evening.
So that's a Wednesday as well?
Correct.
I appreciate you looking, your teachers, administrators, looking for options other than the weekends, because I do know at times the fine arts have been pushed even to weekends in the spring. And so I appreciate that this is a Wednesday, it's it. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to grant an exception for the Wednesday night rule for the band concert on March 9th.
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Kyle Rensburger. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Mrs. Vance, update on COVID.
So I want to think back, and I know that Nurse Butler is here as well for the data that they've been providing, so I have some data prior to the policy which talked about the mask mandate, and I'll read some of that data to you, and then also want to clarify some points within the policy that have been brought to our attention and make sure that we discuss that. So again, with two of our nurses here, I think, you're the two that are here. Thank you so much for everything you're doing. I know that at times it feels and seems overwhelming, and want to publicly thank you for the work that you're doing. So from August 3rd to September 8th, here are some data points for consideration. Rochester High School at that time had had, from during that time period, 12 different staff members who were quarantined. During that time period, 175 students had been quarantined. We had three total positive staff cases, 15 total positive student cases. Prior to September 8th, at Rochester Middle School, we had eight total quarantined staff members, 139 total quarantined students. We had two staff members from Rochester Middle School who had tested positive, and 11 total positive students during that time. At Riddle, we had 14 total quarantine staff members. 185 students had been quarantined during that time period.
How many was that chance?
185 total students at Riddle had been quarantined during that time. One positive staff member during that timeframe, and 15 total positive students. At Columbia from August 8th to Sep, or I'm sorry, August 3rd to September 8th, we had 33 total quarantine staff members, 226 total quarantine students, three total positive staff members.
Did you say 12?
Three.
Three.
And 18 total positive students at Columbia during that time period. Working with Beth today, and I'm thankful that both Beth and Nurse Butler are here, because the data seems far different now, but I did ask them to go back, and Beth did some data tracking in regards to, specific to school, because one of the things that has happened is we've had Labor Day activities, and I think both ladies will shake their head that a lot of this is happening outside of school, so I asked them to track specific to in-school data. So at the high school, right now, we have 18 positive students, six positive staff members. Two of those six are part of the maintenance team at the high school. 68 students are quarantined at the high school, 17 of those related to the football team. The rest are related to household, close contacts, and one quarantine staff member. At the middle school right now, we have 11 students who have tested positive, one staff member who has tested positive, 54 students who were quarantined, zero happened within the school. They were all events that happened outside of Rochester Middle School that caused them to be quarantined. Riddle, we have three students who are currently positive, one staff member who is currently positive, 26 students who were quarantined, zero were quarantined through the school, but were household or outside of school contacts. So it's six, 26 quarantined.
So there weren't any staff that were quarantined at the middle school?
No, not at this time, not since the policy's been adopted, nor at Riddle. Columbia, we have three students who are positive, two staff who are positive, two staff who are quarantined, 29 students who are currently quarantined. Of those 29, only five were close contacts within the building. The rest were outside incidents, household incidents. We also have one instructional assistant from our transportation department, or one IA that rides buses, who is currently positive as well.
And I'm sorry, can you tell me, again, with the high school, how many of those students that are quarantined were from the school? And I said so many with the football team, but then...
Six, 68 students total are quarantined. 17 of those are from the football team. The remainder are household contacts. This data does not include, I don't believe, the closing of Rochester Middle School's volleyball team. Happened after this data was submitted to me?
Yeah.
So that number would add to the number of students who were quarantined this afternoon.
That's 13 in the middle school.
Thank you. So 13, so that makes a number at the middle school. 67 quarantined. Of those, 54 happened outside of the school district. The remainder were the volleyball team. We had to quarantine this afternoon.
So it's 13 middle school volleyballers, and add them on to the 11 already in there. That's the RMAs, oh, positive students, 54, got it, sorry, I'll get it.
54 were quarantined, yeah.
And then at Riddle, how many of the quarantined and the 26 were?
26 are quarantined, zero are in-school contacts.
Did I write anything there?
Sure, sure. So I appreciate the ladies and the data tracking they're, they're doing. And especially appreciate the last-minute requests for those that could be tracked in school and those that are helping happening outside. I did, Beth and I did contact Dr. Rayburn mid-morning this morning, and we talked a lot about this and the numbers. Seeing some of the highest numbers of positive cases throughout the district that we've seen at any one point. He continued to encourage us to keep schools open as long as we can, knowing that we would have to shut down teams or classrooms, and just continue to do the absolute best we can, also encouraging the community and staff, or community and business community, parents, to help us out with these numbers. One of the concerns within the policy that has come up that was brought to my attention midweek last week, and I've got copies for everybody here, and I think some extra copies.
These are copies of the policy adopted at the last meeting.
Yep, exactly. I want to draw some attention to a couple of areas that the nurses are finding problematic.
That's the policy that we adopted at the last meeting, but Jan is going to reference it, so she made copies on...
29 quarantines at Columbia right now.
How are we quarantined? Is this because this was...
How are we quarantined? Is this because this was prior to the mask mandate?
No, these are students who, the quarantining happened because of outside-of-school events. So parent tested positive, grandparent tested positive, they were at a function where somebody at that function tested positive. It did not happen within the four walls of the school.
But you said five were from the building.
Five of the twenty-nine are ours.
I think that's what.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So are they, those five, like really from before?
Yeah, it's either like lunch or like things they couldn't, they couldn't have been masked up, so.
Sam's nodding her head. I think a lot of people.
They were from lunch, yeah.
Yeah. One of the concerns that the nursing staff brought to me, and again, I appreciate Beth is in my office every day, having honest, open conversations about the concerns that they're having. One of the confusions within the policy, I'm going to kind of jump forward and I'm going to bring it back on page three. At the top, letter D mentions face covering or shield. Letter D on page three mentions face coverings and face shields. If we could go back now to some confusion that this has caused with teachers who are trying to follow this as well as nurses who are pulling this up on page two, I would respectfully say under letter B that we need to clarify and have it say mask or face shields there. I would say on page three, the very top line, it is required that all students and staff wear masks or face shields there. And especially on number four, page four, letter I, that it says for person who's not wearing a mask or face shield due to exemption, and that we keep that language clean and consistent. That has been a point of concern across the district and clarification and following the policy.
So is your recommendation to, your recommendation is to add face shield, not to stripe?
Correct.
Face shield, correct.
Where was that on the first, on page two, Jan?
On page two, it was under Roman numeral two, letter B.
Thank you.
Mask for face shields. And that, the most important part of this would be at the top of page four, when we're talking about the classroom settings and those types of things and quarantining. So top of page four, letter I that we add or face shield there is the most important. But for the language, for clarification, for teachers who are trying to help the nurses communicating with parents, I feel that it's important that we clean that language up across, across the policy.
And on page three, was that G? Anywhere where face covering or?
Yeah. Oh, yes, three. Yes, thank you, Casey. G as well. So on page three, it would be in the opening line. And then on letter G.
I don't think we need a G. Or who wears a face covering or something?
It says face cover.
Then we should be okay. But I think that that has.
Oh, I see what you're saying though, because other where on that, other one, other places on that same page, it does say face coverings and face shields. I would say face coverings are a face shield, can be, but I see. So yes, to remain consistent, that makes sense to add it.
So I know that that's a change in policy and that came out of conversations with nurses and teachers and will help with the consistency part there. So I don't know if that takes board approval to change that policy.
So we'd be amending the policy. Are there any questions from the board about adding face shield to make it clear that that is, is a viable option to a face mask?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is there going to be any other amendments to the policy that you're going to ask for?
Not on, not on our side, at least.
Okay, so let's go ahead and if we feel comfortable voting on amending the policy to add face shield on those parts that this is advanced red or to be consistent that a mask means also a face shield. Do I have a recommendation to amend the policy?
So moved.
Recommendation by Cal, or yes, move by Cal Mac?
Second.
Second by Casey. Any other questions from the board? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Any other COVID updates that you?
I don't have any. I know that the team is here and hope from the Teachers Association if there is, are any points of discussion. I know that they have been working hard. I know that Beth meets regularly with the team to keep them consistent and to make sure that the communication is the same. And I want to thank them again for that.
I am wondering why this information that was stapled to that, this is the July twenty-sixth information?
Pretty bad. Oh, yeah.
Because the state has September seventh updated information and this doesn't have the other two options, the eight and ten day. This is only the ten day.
So I think that Beth and Kevin can help answer those questions as well in regards to the number, the quarantining, is that the question?
No, I'm wondering why this is old information stapled to the policy?
That, I printed out all of the information.
So we adopt, this, was this originally attached to our policy though?
No, it's the first time I've ever seen this. And I've spent hours on the Indiana Department of Health study.
So what, what are those dated?
Since July twenty-sixth. And I know they've got September seventh and September third. They have the same quarantine decision tree that has the eight, ten, and fourteen options, just very simply one, two, and three. That's what I emailed everybody tonight with the Department of Health, actual rules, not guidelines, but their actual rules on, you know, all of that stuff that was it.
So are you asking if that's a decision tree that they are using at this point? Is the September seventh one?
I would hope it would be so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering why this was stapled to the policy.
No, I think part of the concern that is coming out of this is on the athletic end in regards to what we need to follow athletically and the guidance there. And so in, in our policy, it shares specifically that the policy does not pertain to athletics or other strategic, other areas where it is difficult. So ban, wire, those types of things. So in that, one of the discussions, and Kevin and Beth helped me out here, is a discussion around the wearing of masks when students return and whether or not that allows them to participate athletically. Correct?
Right. The policy applies to athletes. The exemption for quarantining does not apply to those extracurricular activities.
Correct.
And I guess the way that I would see the practice, you know, when you, if you choose the eight-day option, a seven-day option, you know, the Department of Health has in their rules that you come back and you take your precautions. So you're masked, you stay six feet away, and nothing in the policy differentiates between athletics or just regular classroom time or walking down the hallway, except for that quarantine exemption, which the state says athletes can't have it, ban can't have it, wired can't have it. So that's in there. But nothing else talks about it. But the state, the actual rules from the Department of Health say, you know, when you come back on day eight, if you've gone and you've got your negative test on day five, and you come back on day eight, then you, you know, take the precautions. You check your symptoms, you mask up, you stay six feet away, unless the county health officer or the state says something different. And nowhere else in the Department of Health rules does it talk about differentiating athletes from anything except for the exemption to the quarantine. So as far as the practice and how that would go about, I guess how I feel would be, that would be a conversation needed to be had with Dr. Rayburn and have him give a directive on, you know, do they go back to practice? Do they just stay six feet away? Do they wear a gator? Do they, I mean, because we don't differentiate between masking, except for when you're the asymptomatic and you have to wear, you know, surgical mask. So if they wore a gator and they were six feet away from everybody, is that okay?
Well, I think if they are close contact, we agree that they would be wearing this type of mask.
Yeah. What does the IHSA mandate though? That's the catch.
It does say on the ISDH that actually the changes do not apply for athletics when it's talking about the changes above as far as COVID nineteen guidance asymptomatic close contact. So they do still recommend the fourteen-day quarantine for athletics in the CDC.
But we didn't adopt the IHSA's recommendations.
Well, hold on.
The IHSA is not going to mandate?
No, they refer you to the ISDH.
What did she just reference? What did you reference?
CD, uh, ISDH guidance. Yeah, it's in two of the different documents I can send up to you.
Because the CDC did not make our policy, the ISDH.
No, ISDH is.
Okay, yeah, yeah, CDC is not in there.
Yeah.
So you have two documents from the Department of Health that talk about athletes being quarantined for fourteen days?
Yeah.
As a requirement?
No, as a guideline.
As a guideline. So it is not a requirement. It's not in our policy.
Well, I read it as a guideline from the ISDH. There's very few things that are actually, we have a lot of.
No, they have very clear IAC rules.
Well.
That's what we are mandated to follow.
Right.
Not guidelines or recommendations. So I mean, I guess if the board wants that in the policy, I'm just saying, this is worthless if we don't enforce what's in here. We don't take our own opinions and say, this is what I like out of the CDC, this is what I like out of here, this is what I like out of here, and I'm going to enforce that. We need to put it in here and have a reason to put it in there. And then that's what everybody enforces so that it's, it doesn't come back, it's not confusing to the public, it's not confusing to the kids or the parents. We have one policy, it's on our website, this is just it. And that's all I'm saying. I mean, if the board wants to do the fourteen days, fine, let's vote on it. Great, amend it. Okay. But let's amend it. Let's put it in here.
I think another concern that came up in these conversations, that we've all received information from at least, you know, a couple of parents in the last couple of weeks. But, you know, if they get a negative COVID test and can come back on day eight, then are they excluded from practice until day fourteen?
Yes.
According to what, that, what you just read?
And according to the ISDH. And the other part of that was too, they say that they don't want you to be doing athletics unless you can mask and you can completely distance. And the masks, it's no exceptions from state. That's the guideline.
But what Casey's saying, the recommendations there, what Casey's saying, that either needs to be put in the policy or?
I mean.
Or we can't, we just can't keep accepting recommendations from these credible sources that you're using and changing the rules as we go.
Well, and I, I think that the issue is, I have a parent who came to me with, I saw this on the CDC, I saw this on the Indiana Department of Health, I saw this on your website, and I saw this in the IHSA. Which one are you following? And I go, we go with the Indiana Department of Health.
Yeah.
That was my response. But the IHSA says this, we go with the Indiana Department of Health. I think they're looking perhaps, you know, looking for a loophole in a sense and not, I mean, I agree, parents want their kids back in school and I don't disagree with that. I mean, everybody wants their kid back as soon as they can be, but we also need to, but as part of our policy, we're following the ISDH. And if that's what it says, that we need to make sure that's clear. And even, you know, even if we have to spell out athletics, whether you're a seventh-grade volleyball player or a high school footballer, this is how we manage.
That's exactly what I think we need to do because you got to look at like football, for example. If you're shut down for a period of time and you come back on a Tuesday, let's say they all come back, is that enough time to truly get them back in decent shape to be able to play on Friday night? Or that's a health and safety concern, in my opinion. You're off for eight to ten days, you come back on a Tuesday, you practice two to three days, technically two, then you have a walkthrough, and then you go out and play a game. That's not the same as going out and playing volleyball matches. It's a whole different, it's a whole different spectrum. But, but I get, I get what you're saying as well because I've had the same, or I shouldn't say the same individual, but many individuals say to me, what are you following? I mean, under the noon, you guys, you know, and, and our nurses are also pulling information on a weekly basis or daily basis, whatever that may be. And they're pulling from information, you know, we developed a policy that doesn't include the CDC, but we're still referencing CDC stuff. It, it's too much.
We follow the ISDH. And a lot of times they reference the CDC. So when we reference that, that's from the ISDH, so.
So do I have a motion to amend the policy under Roman numeral nine, return after exhibiting symptoms, to add a paragraph D that would specify, that would be on page six, a paragraph D that would specify that we will follow ISDH guidelines for returning to the athletic field since there isn't a specific return about athletics listed in here, that we would add that?
I don't even know where that's at. I mean, honestly, I'd love to see it because I've read the rules. It's not in there. I mean, it may be one of their recommendations, but it's not in their rules.
So I'm adding, I'm asking if we have a motion to add that we would follow their guideline?
I want to read the guidelines before we would vote on it though, because none of us have ever had that. I mean, there's lots of different guidelines.
Is there anything that we could pull up to look at or?
Yeah, if you just go on ISDH website.
Would you mind Beth helping Scott find that on the?
She has no faith in you, Mr. Kissler. Come on now.
I mean, I'm literally, I just knew that Beth had recently seen it, so.
But if you go on the I, I. ISDH, ISDH website. I mean, it really is, it's a, it's an onion where you just continue to peel more and more layers.
But that's why we have the trained personnel who have the training, the weekly, that she, that Beth would know then where's that is.
I guess technically.
Well, and part of it is the fourteen within the policy. Within the policy on page five, it talks about under Roman numeral eight, number four, that they would wear surgical masks for fourteen days, even if they come back. And I think the other concern from athletics is putting a surgical mask on students that have been in close contact and putting them under a helmet and putting them out on the field.
But our policy says if you don't wear a mask during athletics, it only says during school or classroom. It doesn't say athletics.
Right.
And that's where the IS, the actual Indiana Department of Health, what I sent everybody before the meeting and underlined where it said, your county health officer can make a determination. That's where it'd be nice to see what Dr. Rayburn actually said, because you have different, different sports. This is athletes, this is athletics, this is all athletics, you know? And so if I'm running track, obviously wearing a mask is going to be extremely difficult, you know? But if I'm throwing, I don't know, I'm not a track person, but if I'm doing something that where I'm not doing that cardio, you know, it would just be nice to have.
This is why I asked the COVID update to be on every two weeks because stuff's always changing. It's important that we follow the policy as is and not amend it personally. People amending it as we go along or adding stuff. We strictly need to follow the policy. And we need to make sure.
We're clarifying as we go along.
Yeah.
Are you able to find it?
Yeah, it's, all of it's right there. That's all the guidance from the ISDH for school.
So where's the athletics?
Oh, okay. I know. I read all of that. Okay, so here it talks about the changes in definition that only apply to students in K, in grades K through twelve for the academic school day while in the classroom. And then below says these changes do not apply in high-risk classes, changes do not apply for athletics, including cheerleading or other extracurricular activities.
But that's the eight twenty-four. But that's the 824?
Yeah.
They actually reissued that in September.
Well, we can go to the 97, they're both on here. That's guidance for masks in school, is that what you're?
I think it would be the September 2nd one. That's where they updated the quarantine.
Going on a mask.
I mean, they have updated guidance for going on a mask, but.
They had the quarantine on September 2nd, then they had the mask on September 2nd, and then September 7th, I just pulled two new ones. I'm not sure what the difference was.
Yeah, if you want to click on guidance for masks in school, then click on that.
I don't see a second one there, I see a third, September 3rd, but I don't see a second one over there.
And that might be how they dated it, it's just on the forums.
I mean, that's the, that's the updated guidance there, that's updated every Thursday.
And so that's.
It might have been from like a webinar, and sometimes they have.
A webinar for you then?
What?
A webinar.
Okay.
I think it was on there.
Yeah, probably a webinar is what it's from. Because that would have been, did you say 92? Yeah, that would have been Thursday.
Let's see here. Yeah, it's dated from 93.
So, do, I have a motion to amend to follow the Indiana State Department of Health guidelines for athletics. If so, we can move forward. If not, then this topic would be a study session topic, and if there would be further discussion on what to amend at the next meeting, we could, but that's.
Jenny, I still don't see anything for athletics, though.
Nurse Butler and Nurse Stigall just said it was through a webinar.
So there's no use
Well.
amending it to a webinar, we don't have that information.
The guidelines that were set by the ISDH that were shared with them at a webinar.
Well, that's it right there. But this was just like.
Are you saying that's the most recent for athletics?
Yeah, it doesn't say athletics, though.
It says it in the document.
It does not say that they are recommending at anybody who is quarantined as a close contact in athletics to be quarantined for 14 days.
Yeah.
All it says is the same thing that we did when we passed our policy. Wear a mask at all times.
But isn't that if they're not masked in the classroom, then that would be the 14 days?
The what, I'm sorry?
So if you have close contacts, even at home, if people are not wearing masks, isn't the quarantine period for 14 days?
Right, and then you have the 10-day option, and then it's precautions of the eight-day with the testing.
Everybody across the board has the three options. It doesn't matter if it was athletes, athletics, or in the classroom, bunch room, taking your mask off. Everybody has the three options. Eight, 10, 14. What I'm saying is there, I want to see and read where the Department of Health is actually saying, it is their new rule, that if you are an athlete, you have to quarantine for 14 days.
The sheet for July 26 states, if distance of at least six feet away from others during practice, participation, or while observing cannot be maintained, students should not practice, compete, or attend the activities until have a 14-day quarantine. I guess that's where that research comes from.
Yeah, it's from July.
That's in July, so you don't know what's happened since then.
I have the guidance from 93 from the state. It's from our webinar, but it's from, and it's on here, the ISDH. I can send it to you, but it's talking about, it says, does this change anything for extracurricular activities? No, this change only applies to indoor classroom setting. Extracurricular activities should be contact traced, as described by CDC.
So?
I can send that to you.
But that still does not say that an athlete has to be quarantined for 14 days, and doesn't have the eight or 10-day option.
Do you mean to come back for school, or to come back athletically?
Jenny's talking about amending the quarantine guidelines. That's not practice, that's not activity, that's quarantining.
Whoa, 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 I, I meant for, I think it's pretty clear for coming back to the classroom. But as far as returning to practice is what I thought you were asking about. If you were, because what I'm hearing here is that they can't return to practice until 14 days, and, and I may have misinterpreted. What I was hearing from you is, well, don't they have the eight or 10-day option to return to practice as well? I would think that any student, athlete or not, is treated the same as far as the classroom goes, but returning to practice is a different animal, or potentially is a different animal.
Right. And I'd say I'm going at it as two different things. Number one, they're no different than any other student, whether it's athletes or not. They get the three actions as far as quarantine, eight, 10, 12.
Right.
Or 14. But as far as stating, okay, they can or can't resume that activity, that's not listed on here anywhere.
Well, if they, like what Kim and I have talked about, I mean, if they could safely do it with what they say, I mean, you're masked at all times if you're distant, like you're supposed to during hands for. But like, what we talked about, I mean, there's very few things, I mean, we even considered that with football. You know, what could we possibly do to give them a practice in? But it's not feasible.
So what they would just do is, if they, if they got tested and they were negative, they'd come back to school, mask, and distance on day eight, which is going to be tomorrow. And if it was possible to practice in that same manner, in that very same manner, they could do it. If they don't get a test, they come back to school on Friday, still mask and distance. If they could practice that way, they can do it. Then they come back on Monday, which is the 14th day. So the quarantining, if you have a negative test, stops at day eight. So they don't have to quarantine. We'll have, there will be guys, football guys, they got tested this weekend, that'll be at school tomorrow.
Sure.
So that's when the quarantining stops. But as far as practicing unencumbered, regular athletic activities without a mask and without, I mean, he can't distance when you practice football, but that won't happen until the 14th day.
So they won't be practicing?
They could if, if, if they, if you can, by the nature of the sport, if you could do it, if he could, if Coach Shaker could have practice tomorrow with the guys that are there and have a mask, and keep them distanced, to which he said, you can't do it. But if you could do it, they could do it.
So if it's a sport that is able to do that, however that would be, they could do that, but, so our guidelines, that's consistent.
That's my point. I don't want to put it in there, because there are some sports, there's the weight room. I mean, you know, the football players could go into the weight room, and they could work on that part of it. I mean, if we have it in the policy, is somebody going to see them in the weight room, six feet apart from a teammate, and say, hey, they're, they're doing
They're not wearing a mask either.
What they're not supposed to, you know? I mean, I don't want to take that away from them. If they can wear a mask and, you know, bench press.
Okay, so are we clear then, that our policy is, is sufficient in saying, the quarantine guidelines as is, as we have right now, and that we know that that applies to whatever activities they're doing, they need to stay distanced? And if they're extracurricular activities or something where they can't stay distanced, then they have to wait 14 days to resume that activity, they can come back to school sooner, but.
Our policy doesn't say that, though.
Our policy has the returning after exhibiting symptoms.
Says you gotta wear a mask for 14 days, even if you return on day eight in school.
Correct.
For all activities. Now, if you, if it doesn't say for all activities, then maybe those three words is what we need to add. And then it's up to the coaches and the AD to say, look, you know, obviously, you're not going to go out and run, you know, a 50-yard dash with a mask on, 90-degree heat, you know, you're just not going to do it. But you can go in the weight room, if you want to go in the weight room, do squats.
Okay, so that sounded like that was more of a necessary discussion, rather than needing to amend, that we're clear that those three options exist for any student, but it all, all of those thresholds need to be met to resume the activities in question.
Is that webinar, is that something to be printed out, or is that like a link?
Yeah, I can send it to you.
So why, that webinar is the Indiana Department of Health, they, and you said, the last thing you read is they referenced the CDC.
So any other questions about COVID? I want to thank you, Beth, and Sam, and all of your colleagues. Yeah, Mrs. Shatley, like, you have done so much. You are literally on the front lines, and you have been incredibly professional and dedicated, and our students and staff are so blessed to have you, and we are thankful for what you do in a very difficult situation, situation we were hopeful would be different at this point, but you keep moving forward, and we are so very thankful.
I'd like to say thank you. I know a lot of times when I talk about this, it sounds harsh, but my biggest thing is consistency. And I have heard over and over and over again in the last 10 days, that it's not a consistent message between the four buildings. So I would like to ask that the message is cleaned up, everybody has the exact same fact sheet, like, the 93 fact sheets, it's the, it's the most, you know, absolute most current. You know, we're not pulling stuff from July, we're not pulling stuff from June. I don't know how many times people have sent me policies from other schools and said, hey, look, they're not doing what you're doing. And I would take two seconds, I look at it, and I'm like, I'm sorry, sweetie, this is from June. Everything changed in August, you know, everything changed in September. I'd like to ask that that message is cleaned up, and that it's consistent, and anybody emailing a parent of a close contact, anybody emailing, anybody or talking to them on the phone is reading that same information, and it's, it's either the policy, it's either the Department of Health's rules, actual rules, or it's their fact sheets. I mean, those fact sheets are cartoons, you just had one up, I mean, they were, they're perfect, you know, to explain things very simply. I would like to ask that, you know, of everybody involved in discussing things with the community with, with this. It just makes a difficult situation even more difficult when misinformation is given, because too many people are talking, there's no consistent message. I would just ask that. I do appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know it's difficult, I know it's hard, I know it's frustrating, because it's frustrating for me to listen to all of it, but please find that consistent message.
Whatever we can do to assist in that, just like with the face shields, bringing any of those to our attention that we can clarify, is there? Donations. SioZai, $50 to middle school reading plus program. Farm Credit, Miranda Schro, three garbage bags, cop wheel cars to Columbia. Kristen Gentry, $8 for Columbia Student Use. Fulton County Solid Waste District, $300 to Columbia for reward for recycling efforts. First Christian Church, $2,000 for the backpack program. The Blackbaud Giving Fund, $8 for Corporation Student Use, and the Blackbaud Giving Fund, $4 for Corporation Student Use. Any to. Thank you to our donors. We appreciate the incredible support that we have from the community, and I love to see something like this where from a large monetary donation down to small, they're all impactful and important to me.
Make a comment. I, I saw the three bags of cop wheel cars. They, they were all brand-new in the package. It's unbelievable how many they had there. It's not like old cars. That's kind of neat that they had that many of them.
Is that indoor recess? Or are they going to use them on the slides? That's what my feeling is.
That sounds like a science experiment. We do, as a board, need to approve donations, so do I have a motion to approve these donations? Motion by Joe?
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we have a lengthy personnel report, and there had been a couple of changes that had happened, so if, I think I got, I put it off this afternoon at 3:00, so. High rate of Patty Hallford, night custodian at Columbia, an hourly rate of $13.14. Priscilla Nelson, high school food service assistant, an hourly rate of $12. Jaden Calvert, Riddle Special Needs Instruction Assistant, hourly rate $12. Elena Deshaun, middle school instructional assistant, hourly rate $12. Emily Holt, middle school instructional assistant, hourly rate $12. Savannah Stevens, middle school instructional assistant, hourly rate $12. Mary Ryder, Columbia Instructional Assistant, hourly rate $12. Olivia Medina, maternity leave sub for Riddle 2nd Grade, daily rate of $140. Santa Eevee, case conference coordinator for special education, hourly rate of $14.26. Laura Kay, middle school food service assistant, hourly rate of $14.87. Wendy Sutton, Columbia Food Service Assistant, hourly rate of $13.14. Amy Widman, middle school instructional assistant, hourly rate of $12. And Madison Salzinski, Riddle Special Needs Instruction Assistant, hourly rate of $12. Reassignment, Mallory Bensing, RHS Technology Coordinator to RHS Media Specialist Technology Aid, hourly rate of $12. Marshall Worland, RMS Creative Writing, Grammar, to RMS Facts, effective October 18, 2021. Her salary will remain the same. Changes in contract, Sarah Warner-Wilson, grade six, special education substitute teacher to a regular teacher contract at the salary of $34,600. Retirement of Julie Calvert, Deputy Treasurer, her last day, September 17, 2021, her retirement effective October 1, 2021. Resignation of Carrie Nelson, Riddle Food Service Effective, August 27, 2021. Randy Lewis, as the Compliance Coordinator, effective October 6, 2021. Emily Elliott, Columbia Preschool Instructional Assistant, effective September 9, 2021. Angelina Lunau, Middle School Instructional Assistant, effective September 10, 2021. Kalen Randstad, Middle Family and Consumer Science Teacher, effective October 6, 2021. Termination of Jennifer Helder, RMS Food Service, effective August 18, 2021. BCA Recommendation, Brittany Piercy, High School Drama Director, with combined director and assistant director stipends of $3,403. Athletic resignation, Phil Bowers, RMS 7th Grade Girls Basketball Coach. Athletic hires Bryce Abbott, Middle School Football Coach, stipend of $1,300. Fall intercession, and these will be paid at the hourly rate, Jerah Peo, at the middle school, Bryce Roberts at the middle school, and Joanna Tewalt at the middle school as an instructional assistant. Reassignment, Veronica Mendez, Riddle Special Needs Instruction Assistant to Title I Instructional Assistant. Fall intercession paid at the hourly rate at the high school. Ken Hughes, Jamie Kirkwood, Lucy Hernandez, and Deb Wolford. Athletics, Matt Steininger, Boys Assistant Varsity Swim Coach for the 2021-22 Swim Season, the pay rate of $1,184. And Phil Bowers, the junior, Girls Junior Varsity Basketball Coach for 2021-22 Basketball Season, pay rate of $3,770. Hires Ariana Heishman as a one-to-one Special Needs Instruction Assistant at Columbia for an hourly rate of $12.59. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Don't move.
Motion by Katie?
Second.
Second by Casey. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. And that leads us to superintendent business.
Though, the one thing I'd like to share is clarification around CARES money and with Todd here, and with Mrs. Shatley here as part of our CTA. There's a lot of miscommunication, and I feel in a lot of phone calls that are receiving CARES money is linked to the specific mask mandate. I want to make sure that everybody realizes that that is not true. The CARES money was originally thought about for school districts. The first round was during the time of COVID, when we really needed those funds to be able to purchase the masks, do the deep cleaning, the disinfecting, those types of things. Round two was when it continued, and we were looking at the substitute teachers that were needed, the continued cleaning, the overtime in our transportation department, those types of things. This third round was very specific for schools who had not opened at that point in time. They made it very clear that they wanted those funds to go towards the reopening of schools to be able to do it safely, so they put aside that. So they put aside that money specifically for things like HVAC, for specific remediation for student growth and achievement due to some learning gaps that had happened during the COVID time. In order to receive the CARES money back in July with the original reopening plan, we qualified for CARES money at that point in time. It has nothing to do with the most recent update. The CARES money does not arrive in Rochester schools in any of our accounts. It wasn't reflected on anything that you've seen here, and we have to be very transparent and go through the auditing process. It is a reimbursement type of revolving account, and we have to, first of all, make sure that those reimbursements qualify for the funds, those have to be submitted, and then we are reimbursed for that. So just as a clarification across the community and trying to resolve some of those telephone calls, it has nothing to do with the latest implementation of mask mandate per the Governor's Executive Order.
Anything else?
No, I want to thank everybody. I know the administrative team talks about it a lot, Hope talks about it a lot, just how emotionally draining it is for, for everybody, and we just ask for everybody's continued patience and support. What we're doing within the school seems to be working. Speaking of Dr. Rayburn today, he says we're still a couple of weeks out in regards to this puking in Fulton County, and it's going to take everybody working together to get over that final hurdle.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn.
Hey, Jenny.